Okay, let's get started. Good evening, I'm Christine Ross, Chair of the Voter Services and Engagement Committee of the League of Women Voters Salem. The Salem League of Women Voters welcomes you all to this forum for the Ward 1 and Ward 2 City Councilor candidates. We'd like to thank the Radafred Hotel for supporting civic engagement in Salem by allowing us to use this space for the forum. We also thank our partners, Salem Access Television, for their professional services videotaping this forum so it can be viewed later by those who cannot attend in person. Finally, we're grateful for the Downtown Neighborhood Association and the Salem Common Neighborhood Association for partnering with us to organize this forum, as well as several Ward 1 and Ward 2 residents who provided suggestions for questions and issues to ask about in this forum. Our forum moderator this evening is Will Dowd. Will Dowd is the founder and editor of the Marblehead Independent. He has more than 15 years of experience in North Shore journalism, including roles at the Marblehead Reporter, the Salem Gazette, the Swampscop Reporter, the Cambridge Chronicle, and as co-founder and first employee of the Marblehead Current. So I'll turn it over now to Will to begin the forum.
Thank you so much. My voice tends to carry, so I hope that, you know, I hope, can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Okay, so we're just gonna set the table here, alright? So welcome to the City Councilor Candidate Forum for Wards 1 and 2. This forum was planned jointly by the Salem League, the Downtown Neighborhood Association, and the Salem Common Neighborhood Association, and the planners sought to focus on downtown issues. For this reason, we have included Ward 1 and Ward 2 candidates in this forum. There are three candidates running in each ward, so residents of Ward 1 and Ward 2 will vote in preliminary election on September 16th to narrow the race to two candidates. The Ward 1 City Councilor candidates in alphabetical order are Cynthia Jerzlo, Walter Morel, Erin Terowski. The Ward 2 City Councilor candidates in alphabetical order are Bill DeGol, John Newhall, or New, Newell?
You got it right.
Newhall, okay, good, good. Andrew Smith. And we ask members of the audience to silence your cellphones. Please also be quiet during the forum so that everyone can hear the candidates. No cheers or jeers, please. Please hold your applause until the end of the forum. I'll start by presenting the format and rules for the forum, and then we'll have the candidates' opening remarks. The questions were obtained from members of the public. The forum organizers collected the questions and edited them for length and clarity. In the League of Women Voters of Salem co-sponsored forums, the candidates are given questions and the opportunity to answer about their approach or ideas. They will not engage with one another and will not debate one another. There will be 90-second opening statements from each candidate this evening. Then I will ask the prepared questions. Each candidate will have 90 seconds to respond. There will be no closing statements. Introductory statements, okay, we'll start with the candidates' introductory statements. Each candidate will have 90 seconds to respond. Statements will go in the order the candidates will appear on the preliminary election ballot, starting with Ward 1 and Ward 2. Please address why you are running for councillor and the skills you can bring to the position, starting with Cynthia.
Thank you. Good evening, my name is Cindy Jerzlo, and I've had the honor of serving you as your Ward 1 councillor for the past year and a half. I'm a lifelong resident of Salem and spent 33 years serving our community as a police officer before retiring in 2018. After that, I helped found the Willow's Neighborhood Association and served as the chair for five years before stepping down to take on my role as councillor. In my time as councillor, I've worked closely with residents to address issues, big and small, whether it's potholes, sidewalks, missing signs, tree concerns, or other quality of life matters. Ward 1 is unique and very diverse, and I'm committed to being hands-on, responsive, and results-driven. It's been an honor to represent you, and I look forward to continuing to serve our community. Thank you.
All right. Walter?
Can everyone hear me in the back?
Yes, ma'am.
Good evening, and a big thank you to the League of Women Voters and the Neighborhood Associations for bringing us together tonight, and to everyone here for taking the time to learn about the candidates in this race. Participation is the most important part of the democratic process, and I hope I will learn your support on September 16th in the preliminary election. My name is Walter Morel, and I want to be your next Ward 1 City Councillor. As a new father, I can say without hesitation, there's no way I'd rather live, work, and raise a family than right here in Salem. The city has a great culture. It's creative, resilient, and welcoming, and you don't find that just anywhere. It's from this deep love for the community that I'm running for city council. While I cannot highlight enough everything Salem has going for it, I also see opportunities to improve areas like transportation and development, climate resilience, education, and housing. And to make these strides, I believe we need fresh ideas and the courage to tackle them head-on. This is what I'll bring to the role. What sets me apart from the other great candidates in this race is my professional career. I work for a trade association that represents 90-plus union intellectual contractors across New England and their 5,000-plus workforce, where I provide education, communication, and navigating. I work directly with our teams to navigate regulatory updates, tariff impacts, along with legal and social changes and challenges. I also fight every day for wages, safe job sites, and good working conditions. I'm asking for your vote on September 16th in the preliminary election, and let's get to work.
Thank you. Now Erin?
Hi, my name's Erin Terowski, and I'm running for Ward 1. Thank you to our organizers and all the attendees for helping to put this forum on tonight. I came up here in 2010, attended grad school at MIT, and I work as a managing veterinarian with a family-owned practice group in Boston. Veterinarians know how to work with all kinds of people to solve their problems, and as a councillor, I think these communication skills would come in handy. I moved to the point in 2016. I really love that it's such an approachable community, seen a lot of people that I've met on the side box when I knock their doors. Since 2019, I've been a volunteer and a scuba diver at the New England Aquarium, which has really helped shape my views on the environment and climate. And if you haven't visited yet this month, it's friggin', you should go say hi to Myrtle. Traffic is a really big issue in Ward 1. I've spent two years on the Transportation Commission. I also co-founded SWAG, Salem Safe Walking Advocacy Group, and I was on the Safe Streets for All Task Force. I want to make sure our transportation network is safe and equitable for everyone who lives here and visits here. Another major concern in our ward is flooding. I want to use my knowledge of science and engineering to help find evidence-based solutions for our flooding issues and other climate-related problems. And if I'm elected, I want to be a councillor who can use critical thinking to solve big problems, but I also want to be someone who's trustworthy and accessible enough that my constituents are able to communicate when they need help. I think a veterinarian's a great blend of all these attributes, and I hope I can convince you of that, too. Thank you.
All right, and Ward 2? Oh, thank you. Andrew Smith?
Yeah, that one back there. Yep. Leon? Yeah, okay. My name's Andrew Smith. Thank you very much for putting this on this evening for the neighborhood groups and the League of Women Voters. I'm an actor, I'm a writer, I am a professor, I'm also a dad, raising two kids here in Salem. I'm running because I look at the state of our federal government, and I don't think it represents people anymore. I look at the state of our state government, and I think it's also been ineffective. And then you realize that you can actually help more people at a local level. Politics is local. A fellow that I grew up next door to used to say that, Tip O'Neill, yeah, he was my neighbor. We, uh, yeah, I'm sorry to name drop so quickly into this, I didn't mean to say that. We, um, we can do more for people in their everyday lives here in Salem at the local level, and more councillors have a lot that they can do. Because you can't affect change, you can't fight against the system or do anything if you can't get out of your house because there's a ice slick right in front of it, or a pothole there that you keep hitting. You can't think beyond your own local street if you have issues that are affecting your everyday life, if you can't get to work, you know? If there's climate change going on right in your backyard because it gets flooded all the time. These are the small things. I like to sweat the small stuff. I like to get into the nitty-gritty details. I've been knocking your doors, I see about 10 people here, and we've talked for like 20 minutes because I care about that, so.
John?
Hi, I'm John Newhall, and I'm so thrilled to see so many people here getting involved. I am a lifelong Salem resident who is rooted in community and committed to serving my community. I've, I, I, yeah, I just, service is where my heart lives. I am a minister by training as well as a historian, and whether serving the community is listening, being accessible, being an advocate for you and your concerns, I'm, I'm, I'm there for you, and I want to be there for you, and I want to continue to be there for you. Thank you.
Thank you. And Bill?
I'm William Legault. I think I know quite a few of you, if not most of you in the room right now. I began my existence just across that river behind us quite a few years ago. I was a Point kid. After that, I was a Derby Street kid, long before Derby Street gentrified. You could say I'm a product of the old-school rough streets of Salem. I've served on the council before. I'd like to do it again. I tried my best, I did a good job when I was there. I served one term and then got shown the door the second term, and that was fair. I have no problem with that. What I bring is just experience. I've served on the council, as I said, I've served on various boards and commissions, including nine years on the Mass Board Community Advisory Committee, a group that most of you have probably never heard of, but you really should have heard of. I bring experience. I bring caring, I bring common sense, and I'll admit, I bring a certain bruseness to the way I speak and to how I speak with other people. And I will, I just want to start again, I believe that I'm the proper person for the job. We need that experience on the council, and I want to bring it to you. Thank you.
Thank you all. And just a few more setting the table, more rules here. So now we're on to the questions. Responses will start with Ward 1, then Ward 2 candidates. Candidate responses will be in alphabetical order, then move down one candidate so the second questions begin with the second person in alphabetical order and so on. So our first question of the night, simple, very easy. Salem has made efforts to support people experiencing homelessness, but some people refuse help in finding shelter and assistance with employment and mental health. What policy options would you support to address the challenge of unhoused individuals who do not want assistance?
Thank you. When I took office in January 2024, one of the first issues I addressed was a homeless encampment along the Seltaba Walkway. That conditions were unsafe, unsanitary, with reports of drug activity, human waste, hypodermic needles scattered throughout the area. That's why I supported the Public Camping Ordinance, which aligns with the U.S. Supreme Court's ruling of holding local authority to regulate camping on public property. This was a necessary first step to connect people with shelters and treatment programs because leaving encampments unchecked does not help individuals in cities, nor does it protect the safety and quality of life for residents and visitors. At the same time, I recognize that simply expanding our existing shelter is not enough. The current model is limited. We lack staff, programming, and structure to address the root causes of homelessness, such as mental health challenges, addiction, and unemployment. My goal is to strike a balance, ensuring that our unhoused residents receive meaningful support while also protecting the health, safety, and vitality of Salem's neighborhoods and businesses. Ultimately, we need a regional approach. No single community has a resource to solve this crisis alone. Salem cannot shelter this responsibility by itself, but we can lead by working with neighboring cities.
Thank you. Walter?
Thank you. Yeah, great question on homelessness. So we obviously, as a community, are part of a bigger landscape here across New England, but across the U.S., that we're seeing homeless encampments and homeless populations increase due to a number of factors, rising rents, issues with drug use and everything, along with, you know, inability to find work that is paid at a good wage. So, I mean, for here, I think we need to have, here in Salem, we need to meet people where they are, we need to have those tough conversations, learn the issues that are affecting them, and the barriers that they see are affecting them from getting them from where they are today to a brighter future. So let's lean on the service providers we have in the city and also use city resources to help move the needle on this. We should also educate and highlight the success stories. You know, I think we look down upon the homeless population at the moment. We need to, you know, write, see the success stories that we've had and tell those within the community to potentially create a mentorship program that would allow those folks to tell their story, to continue the process. There is no quick fix for it. It's an uphill battle, but it's one we need to keep fighting. So thank you.
Thank you. If you guys need me to repeat questions, just let me know if you want, okay? All right, Erin?
Well, I think it's, it's important to remember that it's not illegal to sleep outside, but when it gets to a situation where public health, both of the people in an encampment and of the people around the encampment are affected, then it becomes obligatory for the city to step in and help protect people. So I think something we can do is pursue a Housing First Plan. These people need help, they need mental health services, they need drug addiction help, and they can't be expected to find a home on their own unless they have support for those problems. So I would encourage us to support Life Bridge and what they're doing. I've toured the facility, I've seen what they're working with, they're trying to increase access to medical care for residents as well, but we need to encourage them and pressure them to provide more outreach to people who aren't yet housed because those are the people that really need the most help because they can't stay somewhere indoors if they're experiencing significant mental health issues or drug addiction, substance abuse issues. And the other part of this to remember is that homelessness is a housing issue. We need to make sure we're addressing our housing supply, supplying diverse housing sizes and at many price points, and really providing people an opportunity to get into affordable housing whenever we can. And if we're really shouldering much of the burden for the region, I don't think it's unfair to ask the state for help in this as well, just to help level the plane a little bit. Thank you.
Thank you. And Ward 2? Do you guys need me to repeat the question, or are you good? Bill?
Oh, we want this, we're just, I don't know.
There's no easy answer here. We as a city need to take steps ourselves, find the funding if necessary to start working directly and communicating directly with the homeless or the unhoused that we have on our street. We shouldn't be depending on another organization, an independent organization, even though they get funding from us and from the state. There's not a shot at Life Bridge. We shouldn't be depending on them for information. We have our CIU doing what they do, but I think we as a city have to form our own task force, working group, whatever you want to call it, find somebody qualified to run it, hire a couple of people. We need to be communicating directly with the people that are out there, find out who they are, where they came from, how they got here, and yes, why they got here. And then we need to work on finding them help. Yes, it should be regional, absolutely, this should be regional, told you. And we should be petitioning, pressuring, and yelling at our state legislature, if that's what it takes, to add our congressional delegation to step up and do something to help us with this. We as a city government have to be more active in addressing this, instead of really, in some cases, ignoring it, maybe not deliberate, and we also need to listen to the community and the pressures and problems that they're facing because of this situation.
Thank you. John?
I agree, we definitely need the city to be actively getting involved. And I know the city had opened up at least one position that was going to help the gays with addiction and the unhoused population, and they did not fill that position, they closed it, which I think was due to budget constraints, but I, I think because of that, we need to be reprioritizing where our funding is going. We need to be, as someone who worked for a while in Cincinnati with the homeless population there, it, it's a multifaceted issue. Housing first is essential and providing services, career counseling, addiction services, mental health counseling, making sure those avenues are open to people who are open to having those resources.
Thank you. Andrew?
So first off, quickly, the ordinance, because Grant's past speed Johnson, the Supreme Court case allows police department to move people along should they want to. However, our ordinance now supersedes that and tells our police department that they can't do it without offering shelter. I think that's the right move. That helped us open a transition center on Canal Street, that had more beds for folks, and it keeps emergency beds as well, five open every night. I think one of the biggest answers here is for those who want help and treatment is to build the Harbor Light Homes project. It's to put people into homes, it's to build the Life Bridge project and expand their day center offerings so that we can help people get back, get off the streets. However, I also think that we need to keep people from coming into homelessness, and one of the ways that we do that collectively across the state is by building more housing so that people have homes to stay in, they don't end up outside of them. And that, that is key. We also need more mental health counseling, and while a lot of that comes from the state, the question here was specifically about those who refuse help, right? And we can't, we can't move them along because of our ordinance, and nor should we. What we should be doing is going out and talking to them, just as we've heard, we have the CIU, but folks can also go talk to them themselves. You know, you can go talk to these people yourself, you can ask them how they're doing, see what they need, because sometimes human contact is the best way to get people back.
Thank you. Thanks, buddy.
Oh, you'll do it every time, too, I'm sorry.
Are you guys fine when I say the second's helpful? Or do you want me to stop?
She, oh, she's got it.
Okay, good. But I will hold you to it, all right? So Walter, this is for you first, you're gonna be the first one to answer this question.
We're at the end.
All right? You got the mic?
Yep.
What are your ideas to make the streets safer for pedestrians, bicycles, and motorists? Are there specific intersections in your ward where you would like to see safety improvements? Please discuss your ideas for improving safety.
Great question. I sit on the Bicycle and Shared Paths Committee here in Salem, I have done for over three years now. With that being said, I believe we need to build, you know, obviously pedestrian safety, bike safety, but safety for all residents, no matter how you choose to get around. We have e-scooters now, we have e-bikes now, there was a, been introduced via the Blue Bike Program as well. So there are a lot of opportunities. We also see a vast intake of tourists, obviously, during the fall months, so we need to make sure we're protecting all folks that visit us, but also our residents. Yes, with that being said, there are some intersections, the Washington Street Project that was completed, we definitely need to reexamine that due to emergency vehicles not being to access that area as well as they should. One crosswalk that I would like to see completed is the Harbor Walk behind Eastern Bank connecting Notch Brewery. There's no light there, there could be a flashing light, that'd be a huge addition to continue that walk out to the harbor area. Other than that, we just need to focus on clean intersections, more speed bumps at locations such as where young folks congregate, like parks, and those sorts of areas. So, yeah, some work to be done on that, but I think overall, we need to continue to look what we have and figure out what we have, more to do.
Thank you. Erin?
Thank you. So this is a really important question to me because street safety and pedestrian safety were really the reason I was involved in starting a pedestrian safety group called Salem Safe Walking Advocacy Group, and then I took on work on the Transportation Commission. We've overtaken, we've undertook a lot of projects around the city, and I continually find myself being the voice of vulnerable road users, cyclists, pedestrians, people who use scooters, and trying to advocate for them whenever we're designing plans for a new project. I think it's really important in Salem to remember that not only are we a city that precluded widespread automobile use, so our streets are not sufficient for everybody to get around in a car all the time, but we also have a lot of tourists who don't know the roads and don't know where they can cross safely, and don't know intuitively which big buttons work on the light posts and which ones don't. So, yeah, I know. So I think continuing to provide protected infrastructure, especially for cyclists, to allow people more confidence when they're learning to ride on streets, I think that can be a big focus point, providing better connectivity between our cycling routes. One intersection I want to see addressed is Derby and Webb because Derby has a continuous right-of-way going eastbound, and the traffic coming from Webb sometimes gets a little confused. There's also a bike lane entrance there for the shared east path. So I think that's, with the park there, a really high conflict area potentially, and I think we need to be proactive and not reactive and change it before there's a problem. Thank you.
All right. Cynthia? Okay, let's go the other way.
Thank you. Well, there's a lot in Ward 1, actually, that I started to do work. Before I became a councillor, being on the Neighborhood Association, we got speed bumps placed on Columbus Ave, and we had many meetings, all during COVID, and we had outdoor meetings with the neighborhood, and we reconfigured, if anybody's been down to Fort Ave, Winter Island, and Columbus Avenue. We reconfigured that whole intersection, put in pedestrian crosswalks with the lights, that's a big help. New sidewalks there, it's much safer for pedestrians walking down to the Willows. I'd like to see along Fort Ave, the bike lanes, I'd like to see them, and I've talked to the traffic department, and getting that bike lane raised like a curb to make it safer for walkers and actually put lighting on that side of the street. One of the big, worst intersections, I think, is Webb and Essex Street, and Crowley with their Community Benefits Act was allotting at least almost a million dollars to that intersection to redo that, and hopefully that's still gonna be on the books. It's kind of up in the air right now, but I've been with the traffic department down there, and we've tried to come up with different ways to reconfigure that intersection. There's been some bad intersection accidents there. We're actually implementing speed bumps down the point, at least five streets down the point, they'll be between now and next September. Thank you.
John? Do you guys need me to repeat the question? Just let me know, all right?
I'm all good, thank you. Actually, as I was walking here, I know it's not in my ward, but the intersection just outside, people were talking, the pedestrians I was crossing with were commenting on the fact that all traffic in all directions has to stop in order for pedestrians to be allowed to cross, which means pedestrians have to wait longer. Now, in my ward, at the intersection of Essex and North Street, we see the same thing happen, and regularly, I do this myself, when I see no cars coming, I just cross. That's what a lot of people do. And one, so one of the core things for increasing pedestrian safety is making sure our light structure, the way that the lights change when pedestrians press the button, really works for both the cars, not creating traffic, more traffic than is necessary by stopping everybody at once, and works for the pedestrians by not waiting, making them wait through multiple light cycles. Similarly, crossing at crosswalks, I'm a big fan of raised crosswalks and creating, finding where those places are that they make sense, as well as shrinking the street. I know there's been a lot of discussion about the Ropes Mansion and the Ballards there. One of the good things about that construction project was the bumped-out sidewalk, and it created a crosswalk that's much shorter. Thank you.
Thank you. Andrew?
Yeah, all right. So in terms of the bikes, safety for bicyclists, it's about connected, protected bike lanes. It's about making sure that people can get around the city safely, and places like Uphill and Ave could really use that, and that would connect my ward more to, to a lot of shops and things like that. In terms of pedestrian safety, I feel like we could do more with that same, that same intersection, Essex North, with the diagonal crosswalks that can help slow cars down because it feels like more of a thing. It also would let pedestrians move a little bit more quickly through there and not be running to catch that light. I also feel like there are, when you come up, when you come around the Commons, so on Washington Square there, and the Roger Cohnen statue, the Wood Museum, people whip around that corner, it's a blind corner, there's a crosswalk right there, and I'm preaching to the choir, I know, I'm really, I know the audience here. There's usually a, there's a standing-up pedestrian crossing, and it gets smashed and knocked down all the time, which is not a good sign. That probably needs something that's a little more protected, I'm talking about a light, or I'm talking about something to at least slow down the cars there because that's a really dangerous blind turn. The city's done a lot of studies on this, they have the data, and we've seen what intersections are the most dangerous for pedestrians. Luckily, in Ward 2, we're actually doing quite well, but there are still a couple that we can fix like those.
Thank you. Bill?
I've been back in Salem for 28 years, and I've been a pedestrian or a bicyclist for 28 years. Haven't had a car, haven't driven a car. Haven't had a car, haven't driven a car in 28 years. I walk everywhere in this city. I can get a lot of places quicker in October than you can drive them. I know exactly where to cross and not to cross. I avoid four-way intersections like the Plague. They're dangerous because of the right turn on red, no matter what is posted. I think enforcement is the main thing here. Are we making an attempt to enforce the traffic laws as best we can with the staffing that the police department has? That's a conversation that we need to have with public safety, which I know that has occurred many times with past councils. I think one of the key things we need with these big four-way intersections is an upgrade in the signaling. I know that in Beverly, they have some lights out there that are a more modern system that actually address the right turn on red thing a little better by having various signals telling you when and when you can't go. We need that, we need to look at that. But we do need to enforce bump-outs, raised crosswalks, absolutely. I have no problems with those bicycle lanes, but we do have trouble in this city with the width of our roads, and we have to be smarter in designing some of these bump-outs and some of these bike lanes. We need to make sure in the right spots and that vehicular traffic can still travel safely too.
Thank you. So we'll move on to our third question here, and it's about parking. Parking for downtown residents during Halloween is particularly challenging. What solutions would you propose to help ease difficulty for residents? How would you respond to particular residents' concerns about parking? Sorry, Aaron, yes.
I got to start with this.
I'm sorry, I was struck with that sentence. Sorry, it just didn't make sense, sorry.
So I think one thing we really need to lean on is increasing fees for people who want to park in Salem from out of town. We can do this for visitors and we can do this for tour buses. If we have too many people circling downtown looking for parking, that means we're not charging enough for parking. We can offer subsidies for residents, subsidies for people who need to be downtown to work. But if we can, I mean, it's supply and demand. If you increase the cost, you're gonna drive the demand down, people will find other ways to get here. We have other ways to get here. I think that's part of it. We can also look at increasing our use of shuttle parking. I would love to see some of that parking revenue used to maybe put up some food trucks or some rest stops at the shuttle lots so that people who drive in, if they can't get a bike downtown, they can, you know, get, you know, BioBrake and get some food and then get in their cars and go home. And then the other thing we can do is just really to promote people to come here by alternative means of transportation. Really want to make sure that we're able to provide people who need to be downtown a way to get around downtown. And if people really want to drive downtown, that's fine, but make sure they're paying appropriately for it because they're causing wear and tear on our roads and causing other problems for the people that live here.
Thank you. Cynthia?
Thank you. I was in support of expanding the Halloween overlay district parking. That's where people, residents, could actually use their own parking spaces and charge people. Some of the councils weren't in favor of that, but I was in favor of letting more people, more of the neighborhoods, so it would help with the parking, that people wouldn't keep driving around or illegally park. And it actually helps some of our residents to make a little money after all the stuff we have to put up with during Halloween. Also, the visitor's parking system with the new resident parking system, I've asked and I'm still trying to advocate to go back to the placard, the visitor's placard that people can use. A lot of people find it very difficult to use the new system online when they have a visitor come over, so I've been still trying to advocate to get that placard back. It would be just like they used to have, that you could do a hybrid system, whether they do online or they can do the placards. So I'm not there yet, but I'm still advocating for that. I think, yes, they have to do better with the downtown parking. I know they're going to the Passport app for some more parking lots downtown. I think it's a good app, a lot of people still don't know about it, and I think the public needs more education on that. Thank you.
Thank you. Walter?
Thanks, Chris. Yeah, a few things. So, I mean, I see resident parking almost slipping away of the Common area, where we live on, Forester especially, there is no current resident parking. I think we need to increase that to a longer period. You know, our Halloween these days starts really, it started last weekend. So, you know, I would like to see an increase in resident parking through the time and through about the 15th of November. So that, I think, would also help. I agree with the placards, the, trying to get the information if someone's just coming for a quick visit is quite cumbersome online. So the possibility of maybe one placard per house would also be a great help, just if someone's stopping in on their way to Beverly. Also, to get revenue to the city, bus parking, I think, should be completely moved to the Shetland Park area. We should also be charging a larger fee for bus parking, there shouldn't be any near the Common or on the Bridge. And then, I mean, the MBTA does a great job of promoting additional transportation options, and we need to continue to promote that. The shuttle service does work to an extent, but it's something that I, again, I think we need to promote more of. Alternative options are 100% necessary because it is just a driving circle of madness here in October that we do need to fix. So, but it's residents first, and, you know, they deserve parking before the tourists and everyone else who's in.
Andrew?
Yes, I also, I was gonna talk about residents first. I wanna, I'll start with that because, you know, we do have garages that residents can use and they're set it up through, usually their buildings, their HOAs, and they'll, for the Museum Place Garage, one building, they park on the roof, right? Their parking's all the way up on the roof, and then everybody who's a tourist gets to park down below. That may not, let me seem like it's innocuous, but it's really not because it shows somewhat of a disrespect for our permanent residents that live here. We can do a better job of communicating with residents about the options. We can make sure that they know that in the Park Passport app, for example, you can park for free in the Church Street Lot on Sunday afternoons, whereas everyone else has to pay. You just have to have the app and you have to have it registered with your, I don't know if anybody knew that. Did you know, Jack knew that? I found that out yesterday when I was there. There are little things that we can do better for the residents, and that's expanding our resident parking, places like Essex Street, I know. We also just lowered our parking minimums for new buildings. I want us to also look retroactively at some of the buildings that have too much parking and figure out how we can right-size them as well, maybe leasing those spots out to other buildings, people who don't have parking, maybe hopefully turning in, some of it into green space. But trying to figure out how we can make sure that all of our buildings are being utilized effectively.
Thank you. Bill?
Parking is always gonna be an issue in Salem. The way that our society is configured today with everybody driving multiple cars per family, it's always gonna be an issue. There are ways to address it. Some of these have been addressed here by some of the other candidates, but let's look at the white elephant in the city, which is that pile of rubble that we call the Witch, the Witch City Mall parking garage, the Museum Place parking garage, I still call it the East India parking garage. That's not, that building's not long for this world. We're gonna be building on Church Street. The conversations have already started, and that conversation needs to get larger and it needs to become active. What are we going to do? What are we gonna build there? When are we gonna build it? And how big are we going to build it? What kind of mix are we gonna have? Resident parking, that was a monster created in the early 60s that was going to be limited, limited strictly to Salem State. And since then, it's grown into this multi-tentacled monster that just dominates the city. Every time you get a street that becomes resident parking, the next street over wants it because all the parking that's non-revident moves over that one street or those two streets. There has to be a larger conversation on this, and right now, it all hinges on the new garage that was supposed to be building on Church Street.
Thanks. Thank you. John?
God, these are some great answers. I agree with almost everything that's been said. Parking in Salem, especially at Halloween, we all know is terrible. And one of the, one of the best things that we've done, I think, to address it is the satellite parking with shuttles into downtown. That, I, I know the question was mostly about Halloween and October, but I think that's a pilot that we can expand to look more broadly throughout the year in terms of access to transportation. I think fundamentally Salem needs to be a more pedestrian-friendly, bicycle-friendly place that people feel like they don't need, residents feel like they don't necessarily always need to drive to get downtown, and that entails making it easier to get downtown. I think expanding opportunities for residents to park for free or subsidize parking downtown is also essential, so as not to prioritize visitors. And I agree with the resident parking placards for visitors. I think that bringing those back is essential. The number of people who've talked to me about how cumbersome the electronic system is shows that we at least need an option for the paper placards.
Thank you. Our fourth question now, and we'll start with Cynthia. With the recent closure of the Daily Table, access to healthy, affordable food options has been reduced in the downtown. What ideas do you have to strengthen residents' access to healthy, affordable food in the downtown area?
Thank you. There are actually, when you research this, there are a lot of different resources throughout the city, a lot of different programs. They had a program all summer, the Summer Eats, the different playgrounds, the Common had it, they had it down Winter Island, down Palmer Cove Park, or Mary Jane Lee Park, actually, for kids for the summer. There's the food pantry, there, shelf, I don't know if I just shut it off. I don't know.
Yeah, you're good.
There is a pantry in the high school. I think that a lot of people just don't know about these programs in Salem. I think there needs to be more education. I don't know if I can just cut that out. Can you hear me? Okay. I'll just talk loud.
Use this one.
There you go. Okay.
Now we got three mics.
I think there are a lot, I know I love the Daily Table, it was a great place to go to, but I know the Shetland Park, one of the developers, they've been talking about maybe putting an all-D market or some type of market in their development there. I know that would be great for the neighborhood. But there are a lot of programs in Salem in the surrounding areas, different pantries. I think a lot of people just don't know about it, maybe expanding the pantry's hours. I know it's run by a lot of volunteers, but I think there is a lot of resources out there and people just don't know about it. And I think more education would help people get to the food that they need. One of my ideas was, though, a, some type of locker downtown on public property, almost like an Amazon locker, that you could get a code and the families could go to that locker and pick up a meal. So that's one of the ideas. Thank you.
Thank you. Walter?
Great. Yes, so with the closing of the Daily Table, we definitely see a food desert within the downtown neighborhood. I actually helped run the Palmer Cove Community Garden for three years before jumping into this race. So, you know, we are hyper-focused on providing nutritious meals for all families here in Salem. But, you know, we definitely need to look and work with partners across the industry and actually was at the longest table just this past weekend. And there are some folks, and there were folks in that room talking about getting the nonprofit market back into that space or some space in Salem. I think we need to come together as a community to work through that and get over the hurdles associated with that to get something there that does work for everyone. It also gives people, the Salem Pantry is great, it's obviously utilized, they also have a strong burden with so many folks using it, but I think there is some normalcy that comes with being able to shop in a market setting opposed to a food pantry. We also have the Mac Park, which is a great resource for a lot of folks, along with the Thursday Farmer's Market, and, you know, we need to continue to use those. We could expand the Mac Park, which is Salem community-run, to provide those fresh resources for folks. And, you know, we need to also educate on nutrition at the school level as well.
Thank you. Aaron?
So I think the very easiest thing that we can do as a community is support the resources we have. The Salem Pantry just had to cut their operating hours because they didn't have sufficient volunteers. So it's really easy to sign up for a shift, they're only two hours, you can do it online. You can volunteer at the Mac Park Food Farm. And I think the Salem Pantry also uses overflow food from the gardens at Palmer Cove Park, so it has a low carbon footprint as well because it's pretty locally sourced food. But continuing to support those options, I think it's important to note that even though Daily Table closed in, what, mid-May, that space is still open. And if there weren't, you know, hope that I think we could get something in there, then I think it probably would have filled up again. I think there's a lot of interest in making that happen. It takes a lot of hands to make that work, it takes a lot of time, it takes years to build those relationships for sources for food like that. So if you're interested, contact the Food Policy Council, work with the Salem Pantry, work with these groups who are trying to fix the problem because there are a lot of people interested in this in Salem. We can also work to help with other local gardens and maybe establish local gardens in vacant areas of land, and absolutely advocate for new grocery spaces in places like Shetland Park, also in the Church Street Lot as we look at what's gonna go in there. Hopefully something mixed-use retail, parking and residential, but we'll see, that's kind of off in the future. But there are conversations happening, and if you really care about this, then it's really easy to get involved, and I encourage you to do so.
Thank you. Bill? Yeah.
You sure?
Yes, I am 100% sure, I'm sorry.
The question I have here is not really a simple question to answer. Yes, Salem City Government does their part with the Salem Eats program and supporting Salem Pantry. What could Salem City Government have done to support Daily Table before they closed? I'm not sure how many conversations in that direction happened, and maybe that's on Daily Table, but it should be on us as a city government too. We have the third rail of government here in Salem is the Rainy Day Fund. Pretty healthy rainy day fund. We very seldom touch it, if we ever touch it. Why couldn't we do something to partner with a local market, a market that's interested in doing business like the Daily Table? Why couldn't we have used some of those funds to help keep the Daily Table afloat with some temporary operating funds? Why did that conversation never happen? I don't know if it's the city government's fault, Daily Table's fault, or both. But there are things we, as the city government, can do that we're not doing, similar to the unhoused situation. We need to stop talking about it and do something. And I think that that rainy day fund, it's accessible, the money is there. Is it possible for us to partner with a professional market to fill that Daily Table space and help them survive?
Thank you. John?
I agree. What I was thinking are things that Bill and Aaron said. While we're, while we're working to fill the space and to figure out what comes next now that Daily Table is gone, supporting the Salem Pantry is an incredibly important thing that we should be doing. Utilizing the resources that we have and expanding them when possible. I think, I think engaging in those conversations at the city level about what could we have done better in order to make sure that in the future, when we have affordable access to groceries, we can maintain that despite what federal and state funding issues there may be, is an incredibly important conversation to be having and in the immediacy to be working with the resources that we do have.
Thank you. Andrew?
It's hard that Ward 2 goes last every time. We have, we're running out of stuff. No, I got stuff. Daily Table closed so abruptly and gave no notice that we had very little we could do, it was a really, a real big shock. And now we're left with Crosby's down there as the only grocery store. It's very expensive. You go in, it's great, people are nodding. It's ridiculous. Because, so the free-market solution here for that is to find another grocery store. Maybe it's in Shetland Park and somewhere else. It's to put a grocery store in so that there's at least some competition. However, I would also like to think about a city-run grocery store similar to how New Hampshire does their liquor stores. And a government-run grocery store that doesn't have to turn, the profits are slim, but could also have co-op-style shifts, which helps keep grocery prices down, where people can sign up, you're a member, you do a couple-hour shift here and there, and it ends up running the labor for the grocery store, you know, aside from management, and it is able to keep the food prices down. We can also help out the Salem Pantry as well with more volunteers. Maybe we could put the senior tax abatement program, I don't think you can volunteer there yet or on any real food policy, I don't think there's any food, I was trying to look at the list before I came here, actually, coincidentally. But I do want to look into that to try to make sure that we have enough volunteers for that. Also, there are apps like Too Good To Go, where food waste at the end of the night of a restaurant can be sold off for a lot cheaper. It should be given away for free, it should be brought out to people who need it.
Thank you. So we are at the halfway mark and we're at 7:51. So we are at the halfway mark, and we're at 7:51. So we have eight questions here, and we're at number five now. All right, so Walter, you'll go first. How could you balance concerns of residents around tourism, tour group sizes, noise, trash, and bathroom availability against the commercial needs of businesses in Salem? Did you need me to say that again?
Bathrooms, trash.
Group sizes, noise.
I see them, yeah. Yeah, tourism. So, oh, I need a mic too.
So I actually pour pints at the old Main Street Pub during October, so I see the benefit that tourism brings to our small businesses and the community here in Salem and everyone that works in the industry. And, you know, it is a big one, it's a glad, I mean, we see 800,000 people come visit us a year. So it is definitely the place to be in the fall, like I said, starting this last weekend and it'll run until the middle of November. But, you know, I want to be laser-focused when I'm on City Council to roll out the red carpet for the citizens, for the community here, for the residents, because that's really what the city, that's who we represent, those are the folks. You all live here, you work here, you play here, you raise your families here. So we need to be strong and have strong conversations of how we can take advantage and benefit from the 8,000-plus tourists that visit us, taking advantage of, you know, like I said, bus parking. If you take a seat, we move all bus parking to Shetland Park, you charge $500 per bus, that will trickle down, 55 passenger bus, that's $10 per person that will be transferred over to the tour company. It's not going to stop people from buying in our small businesses or eating at our restaurants. So they need to help foot the bill for, you know, the new high school and other projects in the city.
Thank you. Aaron?
Thank you. So it seems like we get a few more people every year, just a few. I think for the last two Octobers, we've actually cracked a million visitors just in that month. And it really does put a strain on, especially the downtown areas where people tend to congregate. I think a really straightforward way to address that would be to encourage people to disperse. I'm not saying we have to send everybody up to the Willows, but if we could have people at the visitor booth encouraging people to go down to Lafayette Park, down to the Babe, maybe down to some of the restaurants and activities on Canal Street, just to kind of spread people out a little bit, that might help with some of the congestion downtown. I know there are talks about increasing the Open Streets Program in October, making sure we stick to the schedule that's established by the city. And I actually think that the practice of having queues outside the shops on Essex Street is kind of a problem, because I think it just encourages people to wait in line and cause congestion for people that need to get through. So maybe instead of allowing people to wait, we could encourage them to go somewhere like the waterfront or Pickering Wharf or, you know, some of the shops further down, I don't know, down Canal Street, like I said. That would just help to break up some of the problems of everybody congregating near the Samantha statue and everything else on the Essex Walkway. And also just trying to spread out, encourage people to visit other times a year, continue with the program we have off-season to really see that Salem's fun to visit year-round.
All right, thank you. Cynthia?
Thank you. Excuse me, just recently in the council and the Ordinance, License and Legal Affairs Committee, we reworked the noise ordinance for the downtown area, Essex Street. The city is trying to rework it, that they're bringing some of the performers down more onto Front Street and also the Derby Street area. The businesses on Derby Street have been after the city to try to bring some of that tourism down to Derby Street, to Pickering Wharf area. So they, we just, they just reworked the noise ordinance, so they're trying to bring the performers down. And we did rework the hours for the people that live downtown. Instead of them starting at 8:00 AM, they're starting now at 10:00 AM, and they can go to 8:00 PM. And we did rework the decimal level of the, you know, the street performers, and so hopefully that will work better for the downtown residents. I would like to try to see, put a moratorium on the tour guides. There's over 300 of them right now listed in the city, and I think that's plenty. So I'm going to try to work on that. There's 40 people to a group that they can allow to have, and anybody that's walked downtown with the tour groups, they take over the sidewalks, they take over the street area, you can't get around it. And the city makes less than $100,000 a year on Halloween with all the overtime, the police details and DBW. So just keep that in mind. Thank you.
Thank you. Now for Ward Two, John Uhl, or John?
While the mic comes down, would you repeat the question?
Oh, yes, absolutely. How will you balance concerns of residents around tourism, tour group sizes, noise, trash, and bathroom availability against the commercial needs of businesses in Salem?
Yeah, I, that's a hard line to walk sometimes. Resident concerns are my focus. The businesses in Salem are fantastic, and I agree, the lines, the queued-up lines outside impact the sidewalks in ways that are similar to the tour groups. And we complain a lot about the tour groups blocking the sidewalk. I often have to end up walking in the street. I have to do the same thing with queues outside the stores. So I know that some of the city councilors have been working to move people out from the immediate downtown to sort of, people who come to Salem who don't actually even know that it's on the coast, which surprises me that, I don't know how you could not know where you are, but the number of times I've heard people say, "Oh, you've got a national historic site with a rain on the water? I didn't know you could get to the water from here." Sending people out so that they can see more of this incredible city, so that the businesses in Ward One, in Ward Five, in like, further out, get some of that Halloween traffic that is essential to maintaining the businesses downtown.
Thank you. Andrew?
I agree about moving people from downtown. I think it's important to open up other areas, the Wharf, the National Park Site, that's the best bathroom in the city. I don't know if you folks have been down there, use that and that same gun. It's very clean, much better than the East India Mall, we'll use the old term. See, there you go. I was here for that as well. So the, moving people to other tourist attraction sites is going to be great, and you could do that through tour guides. You can do that through having the people that they're going to ask at the end of a tour that goes through, you know, the downtown, they're going to say, "Hey, where do I go next?" I was a tour guide for years, I was a tour manager. I know that not only do they take your recommendations right after, they're looking for someplace to go next, but they also, it also is so important that as a guide, you have a great relationship with the actual place you're going and with the people that work there, the people that are your permanent people, and that's the residents. So we need to make sure that tour groups are also held accountable. I would like to see colored badges so that from across the street I can see, "Oh, red, that's," I won't name the tour company that is getting an infraction in my scenario here, and you would be able to report that. We could perhaps have some kind of fines for just taking up a whole sidewalk or being over capacity. And it would be easy to see because of the colored badges. Sometimes they'll hide them, they need to have them out. That could also be an infraction. I love the noise ordinance, I watched that whole meeting, that was fantastic. I would like to get rid of the lines because it causes lingering all day as people are here waiting for shops and they want to go.
Thank you. Bill?
Let's acknowledge the real number for visitors to Salem during the entire year first. It's 2 million visitors. 2 million. That's a lot. Why aren't we making money as a city? Why are we only making $80,000? I don't know. We need to study that, we need to analyze that, we need to find ways for the city itself to actually create and generate revenue from the tourists. Tour companies, how can we regulate these out-of-town tour companies? That's the real issue here as far as tour companies go. It's these out-of-town tour companies that bring in busloads of people with tour guides that probably just saw their tour sheet. I listened to a tour guide in front of the Y tell everybody that the YMCA was founded in London in 1634. He's only off by 220 years. How do we regulate that? And now I'm going to bring up, again, another third rail of local politics, and the tour companies aren't going to be happy. Why don't we have a ticket tax? If we can raise more money through ticket tax, we can use that to staff and keep clean bathrooms and maybe build another one. We need a ticket tax, we need to start that conversation again.
Thank you. Thank you. And our sixth question, and it also has to do with noise. Deliberate vehicle noise-making is out of control. Modified mufflers, sound systems cranked up with no regard for residents, and motorcycles revving excessively at stops. Making noise complaints seem to be an exercise in frutility with no apparent solution. So what can be done? Yep, correct, sorry, Aaron.
So there's a lot of conversation about automated enforcement. I know there's a lot of suspicion about it, I know it can have its pitfalls, but I guarantee you, I can probably talk to more people in this room that have a problem with loud vehicular noises than I do with automated enforcement. And the nice thing about enforcing noise ordinances on vehicles is that we probably also result in some traffic coming as well. And this is something that affects everybody, whether you live on the first floor or the sixth floor, whether you're on Derby Street or Congress Street or Fort Avenue or any of the other streets in Ward Two, it has become a problem. And the fact that we, A, don't pursue people on scooters and motorcycles, which I understand they're difficult to pursue, but if you can't pursue them, stop it when it's happening. And the cars aren't excusable, we should be having something if we don't have enforcement against the cars, and again, we can automate it. We're automating everything else. People write their papers with AI, like, why can't we automate our traffic enforcement? Just save money on people, make it more effective, and make it more widespread. And I just, I think that's a really, we'd have to petition the state for it because there is a state law against automated enforcement, but I think it's really worth looking into to help everybody's quality of life and help everybody literally sleep a little bit better at night.
Thank you. Cynthia?
Yes, it all boils down to enforcement. I know there's a big problem on Ford Ave, it has been for years, for motorcycles driving. We did put in a race crosswalk right at Memorial Fort and Columbus Ave, and that seems to have slowed some of the traffic down. We're actually looking at our second phase of Ford Avenue to do another race crosswalk, and that does slow the traffic down and the noise for the cars and the motorcycles. We have a big problem with the motorcycles. And also down the Point area, there's Harbor Street, we get a lot of complaints, but they will have speed bumps in the next year down there, all through the neighborhood, so that will cut down on that. And it is the enforcement. I've talked with the police department, I just met with Chief Miller a few weeks ago, and asking for more enforcement on that. Even though the summer's over, we still get, all through the young fall, we still get a lot of racing cars up and down Ford Ave and down the Point neighborhood and on Essex Street. So we're trying, I think they do need more offices, I've talked to the chief about that. They don't have enough offices in the traffic department for the enforcement, so that's one of the biggest issues, we need more enforcement. Thank you.
Thank you. Walter?
Yeah, I think, I mean, the enforcement is the key here and the answer. I think it needs to be done by uniformed police officers, and it needs to be done by folks and vehicles, also by patrols, we can set those up in the Point neighborhood. But, you know, you don't really see any speed traps or anything in any part of Salem, which I think, you know, you could see, if you are speeding, it is an offense, should have to, you know, pay the consequences for it. Speed bumps are a huge mitigation, which, as I have said, we need to make sure they are at all parks and places where young people congregate, because they're the ones who run across the street, don't know how to, may not know how to use crosswalk buttons, they zip out behind parked cars, and that's where accidents happen. So let's add speed bumps there. With the noise, the Point neighborhood obviously being in Ward One, that's a huge factor, and I lived down there for eight years, the sound bounces off the brick wall, the brick buildings down there, and it really is sometimes at 1:00 in the morning. So we need to just, again, have more patrols in the area just to ensure that we are making those sounds less of a burden for the folks that live down there.
Thank you. So moving on to Ward Two, Andrew?
We have a lot of issues on Bridge Street with this, which is that there's motorcycle shops there, and that can cause a lot of noise. In terms of the enforcement, I very rarely see anybody pulled over in Salem. I've seen, I drive a lot, I have two little kids and we're zipping around and, you know, I saw some people being pulled over the other day in Ward Seven, that's about, I very rarely see it. We don't have a lot of enforcement. It is illegal in Massachusetts to have a modified muffler, so it should be a traffic stop every time. Where I would feel less comfortable of seeing people get pulled over is for music violations, to be honest. This question was definitely not written by Diego Papa, that I would agree, gee, no. But see, I think he breaks a smile on some people's face. Maybe not everybody, I don't know. But there are, that becomes more of an expression issue, a freedom issue, whereas the illegality of the muffler should be stopped. The motorcycles zip down Bridge Street. It's hard to stop them because it's a motorcycle and that's how it's built, and it has, if it's legal, what do you do? Well, you slow the traffic down, it's a state road, but there would be ways to perhaps put something on there, I don't know if it's a light or a bump, but it's a challenge because it is a state road. But dealing with that kind of problem, finding out where it is, or just having police enforcement there. You should be able to call the police and let them know, "Hey, this guy's going by every night." I live on Bridge Street, I hear it all the time. That's where they should go, and to make the enforcement stops.
Thank you, Andrew. Bill?
Thank you. Enforcement, of course, is the answer. Understaffed police department, maybe that's a conversation we need to have sooner rather than later about what the staffing should be, but you're going to enforce the noise ordinance the same way that they enforce drunk driving. The state police does it all the time, they set up these checkpoints, and anybody that, they check everybody out as they drive by. You can do that in the AU bypass, you can do that on Laurin Avenue, you can do it in downtown Salem. If you're there and your job is to check the noise ordinance for motorcycles, motorcycle comes by that's too loud, you wave them over, you write them a ticket, a good ticket. The noise thing, I'm going to, I'm going to call myself out right now, I'm not a fan of Diego Papa. He's not all that loud, but if he's violating the noise ordinance, he's violating the noise ordinance. If you make an exception for him, you have to make an exception for everybody. So there can be checkpoints for that. The enforcement is the issue, it's difficult because of staffing and budgetary concerns, but the conversation needs to happen.
Thank you. John?
Sorry. No worries. Yeah, I agree with Andrew in that I'm not a big fan of legislating against music. That, you know, I live on a corner, and about five or six times a day, I work from home two to three days a week, about five or six times a day, cars will go by and will shake my house. And I find that deeply annoying. But I agree that it gets into freedom of expression issues. Similarly, I do think enforcement of our ordinances, our noise ordinances, is essential, and we do have a staffing problem for, yet at the same time, I don't think, I'm very skeptical of automation, automated enforcement. I think it raises privacy issues, I think it raises constitutional issues. So I don't quite know how to solve the staffing issue for enforcement. Yeah, but I do think we need to be enforcing our ordinances, and I think police officers are often letting things happen because it's not, because there isn't a big fine, because there isn't a big penalty, it's not necessarily worth their time the way they're seeing it.
Thank you so much. So we are going to go, we're going to skip question seven, we're going to go to eight. The cost of renting a home has substantially risen over the past several years. Would you support limits on the size of annual rent increases or any other approaches to maintaining affordable rents in Salem? Please explain your thoughts on this issue. Do you guys need me to repeat the question? Yeah? Okay.
Great.
The cost of renting a home has risen substantially over the past several years. Would you support limits on the size of annual rent increases or any other approaches to maintaining affordable rents in Salem? Please explain your thoughts on this issue. And Cynthia, you're number one, you're first.
Thank you. No, I wouldn't support rental limits there. I think there's a lot of other ways we can help with the affordability in Salem. I think there's a lot of other ways we can help with the affordability in Salem. I for one would like to see a limit to Airbnbs. I think it's taken, a lot of the Airbnbs in the city have taken a lot of good rental incomes, low incomes, off the market. In my neighborhood alone down the Willows, there's at least 12 in our neighborhood and I know everybody has a right to do what they want to do to their property. But I think a lot of Airbnbs, when they made the ordinance, they never put a limit on it and it's taken a lot of good rental incomes off the market. And so that does bring up the, the rental prices in Salem. Because there's so, there's not a lot of small apartments or affordable apartments. We just, they just passed the condo conversion, which I was not for in Salem. That if you wanted to convert your home into a condo, there's a lot of different fees now for people that if they want to rent, you know, make out one of their apartments into a condo, there's a lot of fees for people, the homeowners. I was not for that. I think there's a lot of other ways that Salem can help with the rental units without putting rental limits for the homeowners.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Walter?
I think I agree with a percentage, I'm not sure what that would be. It would have to look different for developers versus, you know, someone who owns a three family in the Point neighborhood, for example. But yeah, we need to look at other solutions. I think there's three areas of improvement and then there's a long-term solution. So under current ordinance, the Salem short-term rentals, which is mostly Airbnbs, are required to be owner occupied. That again, with the noise that we hear from cars, that needs to be enforced. It comes down to enforcement. I know we don't have the staff at city, at city currently to enforce it, but that is a rule of, of the city and we need to enforce it. We also need to build new construction, continue to redevelop buildings that are no longer being used and repurpose them for housing, but also grow our housing stock through new development that's done with purpose. And then also the last is to educate on the affordable dwelling units. I think we need to educate the actual folks that have the space available. I don't know if they know of the benefit and what it can actually add to their home value, but also give an opportunity to rent those out. I know we, we say that they're available, but we just don't do the educational piece. So, and then with that, you know, the, the main piece is to, we need to ensure that we have good paying jobs in our community that allow people to rent in the current rent, rental, you know, climate that we see. Housing prices are only moving upwards and we need to help support them.
All right, Aaron?
So I, I think it's important to consider the fact that very few people build housing out of the goodness of their heart. Most people are in it to make money, it's an investment, it's an income stream. And while I think that it's not appropriate to raise rents by 40 or 50% a year, I think if you remove the opportunity for landlords to adjust for property tax increases or other market adjustments, then you're going to really discourage new housing development in Salem. And at the root of the problem, the reason we have an affordability crisis is because we are 2,200 units behind what we need to provide housing for people here in Salem. So, and the other, the other part of that is too, is that due to our inclusionary zoning ordinance, if you limit new construction, then you also remove the ability to create new deeply affordable housing because that's tied into our inclusionary zoning. So I think there can be some talks about, you know, where do we make the cutoff? But I think removing the ability for people to adjust their rent prices is ultimately going to lead to a continued escalation. It might, it might look better in the short term, but in the long term, I think we're going to pay for it more because it's going to affect people's interest and want to build new housing in Salem. At the end of the day, that's really what we need is, is housing for people living to keep them off the streets.
Thank you so much. Bill?
Another not so simple question. No, I would not support forcing landlords to only raise the rents as much as we tell them to. I would, I wouldn't support that. They bought the property as an investment, they live on that property, some of them do. This is a free market, we're Americans. That's what we do in this country, it's free enterprise. However, how can we incentivize landlords to keep their rents lower? Are there ways we can do that? Can we incentivize them through some minor tax breaks? Can we incentivize them for finding a way to provide some funding for property improvements and facade improvements, which we used to do for businesses in Salem, I don't think we do it anymore. We used to provide grants, $25,000 grants for facade improvements for new businesses. They did that at Roosevelt's when I worked there when it was one of the new owners took over. How do we incentivize the landlords? Airbnbs, there's no limit. How many of them are out there, do we really know? How many of them are registered with the city, that we know. How many are out there that have not registered with the city? That have not had the inspection and that are making money? They're taking up parking and they're taking housing away. We need to look at that, we need to look at that very thoroughly and we need to address it. Incentivize the landlords to keep the rents as low as they can and find out how many Airbnbs are operating out there that shouldn't be.
Thank you. John?
Yes, I do support limits on the amount that landlords can raise rents. I think it's fine for landlords to raise rents. That's part of what, what enables them to maintain the buildings. But I do support, I do support forms of rent control in that, in that, that enable, that enable people who are living there to keep up. We've also been bringing up Airbnbs, which we have, we have an owner occupancy ordinance. But I think it's worth, worth considering expanding prohibitions on Airbnbs. At least considering to see how that's going, how that reopens supply of housing. For example, if someone lives in a, the way I understand the ordinance, if someone lives in a building and has another apartment in the building, that apartment can be Airbnb all the time. I, I believe that's right. And so finding ways to have that, continue prohibiting Airbnbs as a way of reopening the housing supply. I also, I also think we need to create more housing. Whether that's converting buildings that already exist, which I'm a big fan of, or building new buildings when appropriate.
Thank you so much. Andrew?
Yes, building, housing is great in the UZ and senior housing that can open up underutilized bedrooms in larger homes. Things like that. In terms of, and limiting our short-term rentals, I would also agree with, I support rent stabilization. I do not think it's going to be something that is going to come back to the cities. The ballot, this is on the ballot most likely in 2026. And I'm going to burn my time here, but I want to explain this because it's important. It most likely will not give the control to the cities, it will be a 5% cap across the state if it passes. I would support that effort. It would also be tagged to the Consumer Price Index for certain circumstances. And I believe that with that kind of measure, we're going to have this probably on us whether people want it or not. And we're going to have to figure out how to go forward under that system. So what do we do with, what if that's still not enough, right? What if rents are still going, or if there's a big spike in the rents right before we start the stabilization process? And it's not control, by the way, it's stabilization, which means it does keep going up. It's not just, you're paying, you know, the same rate from years ago. What we have to do is we have to make sure that we are building enough housing for people to live in. And like I said, we have to right-size, we have to do all of those efforts as well and make sure that we have a healthy rental market because hopefully, hopefully rents are going to stay stabilized for future.
Thank you for your responses to questions this evening. Please give all the candidates a round of applause. Voters?
Thank you to the candidates for running to serve Salem as Ward City Councilor. And thank you for sharing your ideas with the voters this evening. Thanks to the audience for listening to the candidates this evening to inform your voting choices on September 16. We also provide our sincere thanks to the Waterfront Hotel for allowing us the use of the space and Salem Access TV who are taping the forum. The League of Women Voters Salem has a website with a voter toolbox with information on the candidates. The voter toolbox at this point includes candidate profiles and positions on several issues based on a survey sent by the League to all candidates and includes award candidates with preliminary elections, Wards One, Two, Five and Six. The remaining candidates' information will be added after the preliminary election. The League of Women Voters Salem will host one more forum this week with partner organizations. A forum for Wards One and Five organized with the Point Neighborhood Association and the Latino Leadership Coalition will be held at Salt and Stall School Auditorium, 6:00 PM, Wednesday, September 10. We're also working with partner organizations on forums after the preliminary election for at-large candidates that will be held on October 7 and for school committee candidates. Stay tuned for the details on that. Please remember to vote on Tuesday, September 16 and tell your friends to vote. Voting for Ward One, Precinct One is at Mendley School Gymnasium on Memorial Drive. For Ward One, Precinct Two is at 135 Lafayette Street in the Community Room. And voting for Ward Two is at the Community Life Center on Bridge Street. Polls are open 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM. And please also vote in the general election on Tuesday, November 4. Thank you very much for your attention tonight.